All right, Madam Clerk. Good morning. Are we ready? I apologize for the delay. I think we're just all trying to figure out the technology. And then I've got Miguel or Councilwoman Martinez is on Zoom, just to clarify. So he isn't going to attend.
I'm present, if you all can hear me.
Hi, Madam. Sorry, Madam Mayor, the mics weren't on so I could hear you because you're close to me, but I could not hear you in the microphone. So it does appear that Councilmember Martinez is present via Zoom. I know that Councilmember Ebert is having some technical issues which we are working on our end, but if you're ready to start, we are more than happy to do so.
All right. Fantastic. Okay. All right, at this time, I am going to open the City Council meeting for Wednesday, December 17th, or 17th, 7th. This is what happens when your readers are not strong enough. 2022. All right, Madam Clerk, we're going to start out with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would love if Chase McMullen would lead us in the pledge.
Of course.
You start from the beginning.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. All right, Madam Clerk, I'm going to send it to you to call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're calling roll Councilmember Breckus.
Here.
Dur.
Here.
Martinez.
Present.
I can hear him. He's very quiet.
He is on Zoom.
Ebert.
Do want everyone to know that.
Taylor.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Shevy.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to send it right back to you for item A3.
Thank you. Our first item today is public comment. It should be noted to those in the audience that comments are to be made to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under these items, or comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Please note that council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior, and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues.
Doctor Sanchez.
Our first public commenter today is Jerry Mifsud on behalf of Colonel Bud Anderson, followed by Levon Reed, followed by Terry Brooks.
All right, welcome, Jerry. Come on up.
I brought my doctor with me here. This is Dr. Sanchez. Well, I'm paying $200 to work the photos. Anybody know CPR? Okay, I'm Jerry Mifsud. You know who I am. But today, I'm Colonel Bud Anderson. Colonel Bud Anderson is one of the last surviving veterans of World War II. He's 101 years old, a personal friend of mine, and I'm going to give him a copy of this meeting, at least my part in it, 99 of the minutes, no disrespect intended. But Bud, Bud flew this plane here. This is a, called a P-51. That's, it says on there, Old Crow. That was named after a bottle of whiskey. Bud was a triple ace fighter pilot. Now, Bud's job in World War II was to fly ahead of the bombardiers. Him and his squadron knocked out the Luftwaffe and the Messerschmitt of Germany to pave the way so we could bomb the fuel installations of Hitler, and that stopped the war in World War II. He ran out of gas, and it was because of brave men like Bud and his friends. Now, Bud was born in 1922, so that makes him over 101 years old. He flew 116 missions and never got a nick. That's how good he was. Bud had 2010 and 2015 vision in his eyes. He had what was called 16 kills or victories, 16 and a quarter. There's a beautiful romantic story about Bud. Bud and his best friend, Jack Stacker, and Ellie Cosby, all were close friends. Jack goes off to war, he gets killed, and Bud consoles Ellie. But Jack had married Ellie before he left. She lost her husband. And what happens? Ellie falls in love with Bud. It's similar to the story of Pearl Harbor, if you see that movie. It's a beautiful love triangle, and Bud stayed with her till her last days. Now, the book that was written by Hamlin to fly and fight is a great account of Bud's stories. You can see some of his dogfights in World War II on YouTube, because when the machine gun goes off, so does the filming start to go on. So it's just, it's outrageous. They're flying, planes are flying at 300 miles an hour past one another. Bud would say that we are better to negotiate at the negotiating table before sending our young into the war. In World War II, he lost his best friends. 275,000 soldiers passed. He was called a hero. He did not like that. He goes, "My heroes are my friends who died." So I would last, like to ask the audience in the City Council, because Bud is watching this, stand up and applaud my friend, your friend, Colonel Bud Anderson.
Bud, if you can hear us, thank you for your tremendous service, Colonel Anderson.
I appreciate that.
Fascinating. Love this.
Congratulations on your victory.
Thank you for bringing this.
Keep in mind about that party.
Thank you.
I want to throw it next year.
Okay, we're there.
Thank you, City Council, for your time and patience.
Great job.
Thank you, Carl Hall, for not holding me off today. And thank you, Dr. Sanchez.
Levon Reed, followed by Terry Brooks, followed by Ron Trevor.
Wow, that was quite the story, huh?
Oh, great.
We got to commend our heroes. I go for that.
Good job.
Okay, well, anyway, I came today. My name's Levon Reed. I'm a local pastor out of Sparks, but I do more in Reno than Sparks. My goal was first to congratulate everybody that's new on the council. So I look forward to, maybe you guys still have some new blood and new ideals as to what we can do to further help the mayor over the next six years since she won by a landslide victory to be reelected again as mayor. I don't know if you are aware of it, but she's done eight years of really accomplishing a lot for Reno. She has improved Reno in so many ways that it's a very nice place to live. I commend her for that. And she did a clean campaign, which I was most proud to watch. And as I got a lot of people to help her over the past few years to make sure she won, I was so glad when she won by a landslide. Mayor, you're brave. I would not have jumped in the river. That part was questionable. And I didn't know you could ice skate. But I've seen Mr. Reese. I know he can swim because he promotes the pools. I saw that when he did his pool campaign thing. I thought that was kill. So seriously, I was hoping if we can get Naomi Dur to step up and maybe we can take Jenny Buckus out, then we will have at least two years of no more nonsense to get out of her, or maybe she could taper the way she behaves. Because we need to encourage the mayor, we need to help the mayor, and as council people, you need to be challenged to learn from Ms. Dur, who has been here a long time. I haven't seen anything negative out of her, so I'm very proud of that. So I'm sure hoping that you guys will step up, learn from this mayor, pull up your sleeves, and when you have a real big problem or a solution that you need to resolve, go sit in a quiet place, pray about it, and say, "God, give me wisdom and discernment," so you could decide and help the mayor instead of fighting the mayor. Ms. Buckus, I'm not out to be mean to you, but you need to taper yourself, and we have to do two years of you. If not, I'd like to see you be stepped down. Because I think this, most people on this board want to help Reno and want to help the mayor develop a good place. But when it turns negative, that's not good for anybody. And so now, my three issues are, we still need to deal with the Reno housing situation because it's kind of expensive, it's ridiculous, we can't get anywhere to live. We need to deal with the mental situation, which I know we're working on, but we still need to get that going because the homeless are still running amok. And if we can do something about the, the bus driver just recently asked me if 852 South Virginia, if we can go check at that quadrant, that cement barrier is still blocking the whole area. And the bus driver pointed out on Bus 11 just 10 minutes ago, I mentioned it, so please, 852 South Virginia, it's a cement barrier is out interfering with traffic. Thank you.
Levon, thank you so much. Happy holidays.
Terry Brooks, followed by Ron Trevor, followed by Dr. Japheth Sanchez.
It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And today I'd like to address following a good example to health in the case of homelessness. Last time I was here, I spoke of a man who helped feed people who were in need. Now I'd like to speak of that man helping to heal those who are in need. He cared a lot about the health of all the people, so he wanted to do all he could to help heal a lot of people. He helped a man with leprosy and a woman who was bleeding for 12 years. He helped a centurion servant and one who was an invalid for 38 years. He helped a friend's mother-in-law and a ruler's daughter. He helped a paralytic and a synagogue ruler's daughter. He helped a man with a shriveled hand and the son of a widowed woman. He helped a man who was deaf and helped a crippled woman. He helped those who were mute and those who were blind. He helped those who were lame and even a man born blind. He helped to cure all kinds of diseases and sicknesses among the people, and he did all of this because he cared about people. He even taught those who had followed him how to treat those who were sick so they could help heal them. And to some people, it was said by he, "I was sick and you looked after me." But they asked him, "When did we see you while you were sick and we looked after you?" He said, "When you looked after others, you looked after me, but those who did not look after others did not look after me." These things were said and done back in the day, and these things are still said and done today. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I hope that all of you are feeling very well today.
Terry, okay, where are we at?
This is chapter 44, and just so you know, we've only got two more chapters to go.
And then we can publish.
Yep, then I'm going to bring the whole thing over and hand it to you.
Okay, perfect.
Oh, by the way, today's my birthday.
Happy birthday!
President Franklin Roosevelt once said that this day would live in infamy.
That's right. That's exactly right. Well, happy birthday from all of us.
Oh, thank you very much.
We need a birthday poem, so bring that one back.
Happy birthday to me. I just turned 70. That's all I got.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Ron Trevor, followed by Dr. Japheth Sanchez, followed by Beth Honbin.
Hello, Officer Trevor.
Good morning. My name's Ron Trevor, and I'd like to thank council for allowing me to speak today. I'm a representative of SAVE, which stands for Senior Auxiliary Volunteer Effort that works with the Reno Police Department. At my last visit, Mayor Shevy, you'd asked me if we ever do anything that's fun, and I told you at the time, we do participate in Halloween activities, so we thought it would be a good idea to share with you the results of what we did this last Halloween. On October 27th, can we get this on by chance? On October 27th, SAVE had six officers at Traynor Middle School for their trunk-or-treat event. Thank you. We passed out candy to 450 children and had an additional 150 parents. On Halloween, we had five SAVE patrols going out involving 12 officers. All four quadrants of the city were visited. The SAVE patrols passed out candy to over 550 children and 200 parents. SAVE does this every year and could not provide these events without the support of our local merchants. Sam's Club, Walmart, Rayleigh's, and Save Mart donated over 300 pounds of candy for these activities. And we did have leftover, and RPD, they got a little bit out of that.
Maybe a few dentist trips, too, huh?
Yeah, dentists are going to love that. Next month, I will be returning with our fourth quarter results and the totals for Just wanted to wish everyone happy holidays, and that's coming from all of our SAVE membership. And I'll see you next year. Any questions?
See you next year. That's right. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Fantastic job.
Next, we have Dr. Japheth Sanchez, followed by Beth Honbin.
Good morning. I'm Japheth Sanchez, Director of the Latino Research Center at the University of Nevada-Reno. I'm here to express my gratitude. You all and the Arts and Culture Commission funded our Dia de los Muertos event, which was held October 30th on our university campus in the Joe Crowley Student Union ballrooms. And we also were awarded, again, one for 2023. At our October event, we had over 400 people attend from the community and from the university. Just glancing over, I thought most from that were from the community and not all from the university, which is amazing. That's part of the intent, to have more families and children visit our campus and see it as part of their regular setting. We also got a lot of media attention. We were on Colo8 News. We had different press releases that came out, and that was all funded thanks to all of you, and it was a free event for everybody. So we're excited to be able to continue that endeavor and offer it in 2023. I also set it back on the timing. This event ended up conflicting with one that was already occurring in the city of Reno by Latino art and cult, Latino arte. And that was totally unintentional, but my way in writing the next grant was to try to have it end October, have it take place October 15th, which ends Hispanic Heritage Month, but hopefully is a messaging of launching of other things to continue. And that way, we're not, you know, seemingly competing with, with anybody else or other events that are taking place. So we're excited to be able to do that and to partner and continue to partner with, with other entities, and thank you all for, for that opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Japheth Sanchez, followed by Beth Honbin, followed by William Stewart.
You just went, right? Hi, my name is Beth Honbin, and I'm very happy to follow Dr. Sanchez because I, too, am here today to thank you for your funding for the Arts and Culture Commission. I'm on the board of Sierra School of Performing Arts. We're a local nonprofit live theater group, and we also do classes in the performing arts. Perhaps you've seen one of our summer musicals at the Robert Z. Hawkins Amphitheater in there in August, and this past year, we did Into the Woods. This weekend, December 9th to 11th, we will be presenting Peter Pan Jr. in the theater at Damani Ranch High School. We're very excited to partner with Washto County School District to present this program. The production is funded in part by a youth project grant from the City of Reno Arts and Culture Commission, and again, I thank you very much for that funding. It really means a lot to our small arts organizations such as ours. The cast of 29 students, ages 8 to 18, has been rehearsing since early September. They have been studying their lines, learning their dances, and practicing the many musical numbers in the show with incredible dedication. One of those students was planning to be here this morning, but unfortunately, her mom's car broke down on the way here, and so she wasn't able to make it, but she did want me to thank you on behalf of the entire cast. This will be the first time since the COVID pandemic began that we have produced a live in-person show with a cast made up exclusively of talented young actors. So we're really happy to get that back into the Reno community. The director, music director, and the rest of the professional staff are impressed with all the students have learned during the rehearsal period. And once again, we thank you for your grant funding and hope that maybe you will be able to attend one of the performances. Tickets are available at peterpanrenocom.
Oh, that's great.
I also want to thank Megan Burner, Ashley Gottlieb, and everyone that's involved with the Arts and Culture Commission for their support throughout the COVID pandemic. Our organization has also been the recipient of a pandemic relief funding from the American Rescue Plan and the City of Reno, and that was just so vital to helping us survive these last few difficult years. Thank you so much for all of that.
Thank you.
And as you can see, I'm not one of the actors, so I'm not a public speaker, but thank you.
No, tremendous job. Thank you so much, and let us know about the productions and what they're doing. Many of us will attend. We were just talking about a lot of the productions that happen locally have been tremendous. So thank you.
All right.
All right, good job. Good job.
William Stewart, followed by Andy Butrica.
I'm going to be third. Good morning, City Council. Renee, William T. Stewart. Thank you for your time today, and I'll do respect, Terry. I think President Roosevelt was talking about the Japanese bombing Pearl Harbor, so. So what I want to talk to you today again is about Firewise. Councilwoman Breckus, I gave a presentation to your ward not too long ago. One of the things, it's very important, obviously, to me as retired captain, is Firewise and having the fire impact our community. I think that's something that we need to work together as regional organizations, not only for the City of Reno, but also for the county as well as the state, trying to talk to local state officials as well to try and get money for more grants. Rosewood Canyon is a great example of that. They were able to do a lot of fuels mitigation in there, and so that's hopefully something that will continue. But then going even further, I know that you've approved the project that's going to be on the south-facing aspect of Peavine Mountain. I think Stan Lucas is his name. That development is going to be going in a major drainage, and Peavine is perfectly situated for a huge wildfire. Somerset's had numerous fires over the past few years, so that's something to take in consideration. There's an article, Firewise communities are all over the place, not only here in Nevada, but also as well as Idaho. If we could turn that on. This is a map basically of a Firewise community just outside of Boise. If you look at the topography, it's very similar to Nevada, but what you also see there is also, how did they get out? That's a box canyon. So if a fire comes from, basically from the bottom up, there's no way for those people to get out. So that's something to think about for future reference. Somerset, I go up there all the time, that huge development that's right on the side of the hill, there's no place for those people to go. So making sure when you have these planning meetings and you're talking to the officials, making sure that there's one, more than one way in and one way out. Egress and access is huge, because as the fire department's coming in, those people need to have a way to get out. And then something also, too, that's coming down the pipe is insurance. A lot of people in California, when I worked for Truckee Fire, they can't get insurance, and I don't see that that's a big issue.
75 area codes.
Yet. I thought that was me. But insurance is a big deal. As more and more people move to our area, having good insurance is going to be paramount. And if people can't afford to live here and can't afford to get insurance, then what happens to our housing market, it tanks even further than it is now. So think about that, and then all, all the repercussions of fire. Not only does it affect our local economy, but also puts firefighters in harm's way if they don't have defensible space. Nobody's going to be pulling an engine up that box canyon to be able to protect those houses without, you know, possible defensible space. As a retired captain, I wouldn't put my people in that space, especially if they didn't have defensible space and they have, you know, houses we continue to build into the forest. So working together regionally, I know real quick about dispatch, that's another issue. The city, the county, the state, all working together for the public safety because that's what government is for. So I thank you for your time. God bless, Merry Christmas.
Thank you so much.
I have some information that I'm going to leave here as well, if I could.
Yes, please do.
Andy Butrica.
I'm here in regards to Reno Housing Authority. I was just in a domestic violence relationship, which ended me up homeless. Sorry, it's emotional. Anyway, sorry to give you a moment. Anyway, what happened is, after I got into the shelter, I got into rapid housing. Then I got an apartment. Yay. So anyway, signed a year lease. Well, Reno Housing Authority came through, and they said, "We have your voucher." So I attended the last meeting. Well, the last meeting I went to was too soon. I should not have been given that voucher that early because that happened in March. My lease wasn't up until September, and I kept telling everyone at Reno Housing Authority that I was under a lease. As everyone knows, you break your lease, you're going to have to pay those prices. Well, Safe Embrace was paying majority of the rent. I would have been on the hook for that rent, and that's not right. So I wasn't ready to move. Now, I should have been given that voucher around June or July. Well, what happened is, I didn't give that opportunity. They give you five months total to find an apartment. I called every single apartment complex in Reno, Nevada, heaven forbid, everybody. They all said, either no vacancies, or you had to show proof of income. When you're homeless, no one really has an income. If they do, they're like, it's a small amount, and they can't afford housing. So what happened is that I lost my spot, and now it's caused me to be homeless again. I can't get back to the shelters because I have to have a domestic violence that had happened to me. So I said, "What do I have to do? Go back to my abuser to get beat up, to get back into the shelter?" No, I can't do that. So what I'm trying to say is, housing is so expensive for people, and for Reno Housing to give you a voucher that early was against my defeat. I waited a year to get my spot, a year, and to have it be taken away from me is not right. It ain't just. I would really like to have these people investigated because when someone has a Section 8 voucher, it should, the rent should go down. It shouldn't be $1,500 to find a studio. That's insane to me. You know, I've lived here for 40-something years, and I've loved this town. I do, I love this town. But what I'm trying to say is, why is Reno Housing Authority getting away with this? It's not right, and I don't know where to go for help.
Well, I'm glad that you came here. I think this is, this is the right place.
Me, too.
So I'm going to get someone to help you, and we're going to make, okay. See, I've got, I've got him right here.
Thank you so much.
And absolutely, we will help you get through this. And so I don't want, I don't want you crying because it's going to break all of our hearts.
Sorry.
And I don't know why Reno Housing did that, but we're going to make sure that we take care of you.
Thank you so much.
All right. I'm sorry.
Congratulations on your reelection.
Alex, thank you so much, Alex. Really appreciate it.
And congratulations on your reelection.
Okay.
Bye-bye. All right, Madam Mayor. With that, we have no additional public comment registered in the room, and we have no participants via Zoom. For the record, we did receive six comments, which were general in nature and not directly associated with an agenda item prior to 4:00 PM yesterday, December 6th. These comments were written correspondence received via our Reno.gov online public comment form or by email to our office. Copies of these have been distributed to the Reno City Council and are part of the public comment meeting portal. There were three comments in favor, one in opposition, and two letters of concern. Additionally, we have three voicemails, which we'll transition to now. Additionally, we have three voicemails, which we'll transition to now.
Hi, this is Laura. I am calling in reference to beautiful old growth cedar trees on Bartlett Street that are being taken down for a parking lot. Yeah, wanted to voice my appeal for taking down those trees. They're part of the landscape. They provide shade and shelter for other animals and are existing as their own beautiful trees in that spot. I hate to see them being taken down. If there's anything that can be done to keep those trees standing, that would be the right thing to do. Thank you. My number is (530) 581-1477. Thank you.
And before you play the next one, I just want to say that this had been posted on Facebook, and I researched it. Apparently, it seems like it's a property near the UNR. I reached out to our urban forester, and it seems he believed it was too late to... These are, just so people know, this is like the third-largest sequoia in Nevada, in all of Nevada. So, I'm going to meet with the university, with the president, and just talk about going forward, what we can do, you know, to prevent this kind of thing from happening. So, it sounds like this particular case may be over and done, but I did ask for pictures to be taken, so we have it documented. So, thank you.
Hi, this is Vince Dan Bryant. I live at 9263 Municipal Court, Reno, Nevada. Our subdivision's experiencing a recent death in a ditch that the City of Reno Building Department and Planning Commission approved. The ditch is almost six feet deep. A car ran into it and a man died. In that process of that, it broke the bridge in half. Anyway, the City of Reno says they will not put up crash guards or bowlers to protect the public. In a six-foot-deep ditch, it is on Military Road, cross-section Sinsetch. Young man who died, for whatever reason, hit the ditch hard enough to kill him. He has two children left behind, and I believe his name is Mr. Hernandez. The City of Reno PD still has a police report, if you want to look into it, but we're looking for crash guards on Military Road for Paradiso Community, which is approximately, almost half a mile, six hundred miles long, crash guards to avoid people dying in the deep, six-foot-deep ditch that the city planning didn't ask the developer to install, and the city didn't install. Now we have a dead man. Three accidents have happened in three years in this ditch, resulting in injuries to vehicles or people, and one death. I can be reached at (775) 277-0909. Best way to reach me is by text. Have a great day. Please consider the safety of the community that is paying taxes to protect the community. Thank you, bye.
So, there's the apartment at 1550 Sky Valley Drive. The lady is Linda Neiman at E. 2017. She has a drug house there that's been running there for, I don't know, a long time. I've been there for five years. I've been assaulted, my cars have been broken into, dogs. This has been going on, like I said, for five years. I'm a handicap over there. This is insane. You guys continue to let it run. TV's done nothing. My family, we've lost a lot. My mom is so stressed out, she's had heart and now stroke. This is insane. She's had to, I've had to leave my dogs. I've been helping the community since I was 14. We started in the military, been there since 1976. I cannot believe this. I have had to get six restraining orders on this house. The other place, we got closed down. I don't understand. I have had to people, you were supposed to come out, you've done nothing. Multiple, and you will start coming after me. Six restraining orders? Are you kidding me? It's a drug den, and she keeps breaking the lease, and also has subletters in there. Police multiple calls all the time. What is going on with Reno? So many people are so upset. I've yelped her. We have so many cars. I was assaulted. You know, what am I supposed to do as a business person? Fight back? Are you serious? I'm a handicapped senior because of South Ridge. I have coded, I've done everything. I hope the community can get back. What do you want me to do? Ultimately, get in a physical altercation? She has been arrested. Six restraining orders, guys. We're really getting mad in our community. Police are now, what, helping her? Really? What is going on with the City of Reno and the justice system? Is this really what we've come down to, protecting criminals? I'm really, really disgusted. Since 1976, I have helped build my area since I was 17 years old. Now I'm a complete handicapped senior, and both my husband's domestic violence, really? They all walk too. I haven't even been in court. I'm shameful of my area, and so many other business people and people have complained the police don't step up. I drug den? What are we going to do about, guys? I'm really shameful.
All right, Madam Mayor. With that, we have no additional public comment. We're moving on to Item A4, Approval of the Agenda.
All right, thank you so much. At this time, I get a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Well, hello, up there.
Hello, hello. Glad you can hear me now.
Okay, good, all right.
Awesome.
Just making sure. Thank you so much. Okay, and then our sit-in Assistant City Manager, J.W. Hodge. Nice to see you. You do not have any updates. Am I correct? Okay. All right, thank you so much. All right, Madam Clerk, I'm going to send it back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're moving on to our consent items. So we're moving into B items, and I just will note for the record that we have no public comment registered, and we have not received any written correspondence.
Okay. Before we move into consent, I want to congratulate Mr. Woodley. Everyone give him a big hand. He's going to be the newest member on the school board. Are you excited? Well, congratulations. We're very happy for you. That's awesome. Okay, so I'm going to start out with Councilwoman Breckis, if you want to pull any items off consent.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to. I'm going to pull Item B11. I have a quick disclosure on that. I'm going to pull B25. I have a quick disclosure on that. I'm going to pull B27, because we've added so many items and made basically our meetings all consent, and I'm uncomfortable selling people's property without pulling it off the agenda for deliberation and for lack of tax payment. So I'm going to pull B27, would like a full staff report, and I think it's one that needs to be highlighted and shouldn't be on consent. And then I'm also going to pull B29. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, Councilwoman Martinez, anything?
Nope, I'm not going to pull any items at this moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilwoman Taylor.
Good morning, thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor Reese. Councilwoman Duer?
Not today, thanks.
Councilwoman Ebert? No? Okay. All right, I'm going to ask for approval of all other agenda items.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're going to start with Item B11. That would be Councilwoman Breckis.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a privilege license for cabaret for a business on the 300 block of Bassett Street. I'm just going to state for the record that I own a property also on the 300 block of Bassett Street, together with my husband and another couple that we own the property. It's probably not necessary under ethics rules to disclose, but because proximity, I think, isn't really material, but I have in the past disclosed my ownership of this property, so I'm going to do that at this time.
Okay, thank you so much. So with that, I'm going to send it to Vice Mayor for motion. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
I apologize, Madam Mayor. Who was the second on that?
Councilwoman?
Thank you.
Martinez? Or was it Duer? Okay. All right, sending it right back to you, Councilwoman Breckis.
Yeah, and this and my prior comments worth for the record on B25, it is the Religious Recumetos Water Reclegation Facility. I'm going to disclose that my husband, Armando Ranelles Jr., is a Sparks employee who has under his purview as a supervising manager the facility that is jointly owned by the City of Reno and the City of Sparks. I've done previous disclosures on this, explaining how this is not a disqualifying factor and just one for information that I'm disclosing. This is for the record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to send it right back to you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you so much. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second from Taylor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, going to send it right back to you, Councilwoman Breckis.
Yeah, B27 is a resolution the council's being asked to adopt to send properties to sale for non-payment, and I'm just uncomfortable having this as a consent item, because we're dealing with people's property rights.
Sounds good. All right, hello, Ms. Van Buren.
Hi.
Take it away.
Good morning, Mayor Sheevy and council members. Vicky Van Buren, Director of Finance, I have a quick presentation on this item. So, these properties, this is something that council has approved in the past. This is our normal process for the special assessment districts. We bill the property owners twice a year, and those payments come due September 1st and then on or before March 1st, when we do that twice a year. Under NRS 271, when a property is, payment is not made and they become delinquent, we have to do a lot of notifications for this. We do a certified mail twice, and then a notice of a lien foreclosure that we send certified mail, and then prior to the sale, we publish in the RGJ three times over a three-week period. We mailed these billings for this particular case on July 15th, and then the payments were due on September 1st. And as of November 15th, there were 19 delinquent parcels that totaled approximately $6,200. The delinquent notices were sent on October 1st. The delinquent notices were sent certified mail in November and December, and the November notice did include a letter stating that the city would initiate foreclosure proceedings. The notice of sale will be mailed in December, if council approves. The sale lien will result in the delinquent parcels being paid in full, with those funds being used for the future principal reductions, and then the sale holders will be entitled to 1% interest per month. The property owners will have a two-year period for improved property, so it's a house that's improved, or 120 days for unimproved property or vacant property, to redeem the certificates and pay that interest to the owner that purchases that. This is the process that we followed in the past, and it is per council's direction and the policy that we've done in the past, and per NRS, we have done all of the noticing for these properties. There are 19 properties on the list. The amounts are very small, if you've looked at the list. The last time that we did this, we did not have any that went to sale, because they do have the opportunity right up to the point of the sale, which would be in January, as it's scheduled now, to bring it current. So they wouldn't even have to pay the whole entire balance to get it up, they just would need to bring it current.
Okay, thank you. So, Madam Mayor.
Go right ahead.
Thank you for the presentation. I just felt it was important to highlight this to particularly our new members. None of these are in Ward 1, so I'm not spending time on them, but I usually do look through the list and see if there's anyone I know, because it's very compressed, and even though you don't lose the property at this time, it's a lot of work to get it back. What's the interest that...
It's 1%.
1% that the people buy the liens get?
Correct.
And then how many of these are under the Landscape Maintenance District Assessment? Are any?
That I don't know.
Okay, because that's a Ward 5 specific issue, and we've been hearing a lot about it, and I just, you know, wanted to highlight that information too, because we've been hearing concern about it, and then is it following through to this issue? And sometimes, you know, I think it's, you know, I've seen people and run into them and said, "Hey, your property's on the list, you know, you've got an issue here." So, anyway, thank you for the presentation.
A question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, and I did press the button on here. I don't know where it shows up, it's obviously not up here, but...
Yeah, and because it gets tricky, just try to flag me down.
Okay. Could you go back two slides? Thank you so much. So, what I wondered on this one...
This one?
No, the one after.
Okay.
So, on this process, when they get the certified, someone has to sign?
Yes.
So that signature required, so that's very good, so they do know...
Yes.
That they got the letter, and it's on the list.
We do get, we give a lot of notices in this, and we have noticed that a lot of the same ones come up each time, and then they pay right before.
So, it's almost like a way of just delaying payment?
They do incur extra charges, though, and, you know...
For interest?
For interest, and then also for our management company that manages these billings, they charge as well, if they go delinquent.
Like what?
A fee. They charge a fee for having to do all of these extra notices as well.
Gotcha. And then, I appreciated the attachments. I have to go back, I guess, to see this other attachment.
Yes, those questions have come up in the past, where these properties are located and which wards, so I did have, IT did an excellent job, and I just wanted to say that.
I really appreciate it.
Doing these maps. They're wonderful.
I really appreciated the map, because we can see where they are. But I guess one more question is, did you, and I may not have downloaded this attachment, you have actually what, how much they owe? Yes, here's the big spreadsheet.
Yes, and they are very small amounts, because in total, it's only $6,200 between all of them.
Wow. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Any further questions?
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Vicky, it looks, I know there's several of these in Ward 5, and to Councilmember Breckis' point, a lot of them are in Somerset. Are there LMDs in the Somerset area?
Somerset, we actually, that SAD was actually just paid off, and so most of these will not go to sale anyway. We are contacting these separately, because we actually just paid this one off after the staff report was done, so those will not be affected.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions from council? Seeing that there are none, I'm going to send it to you, Councilwoman Breckis.
Yeah, and just to answer more specifically, because I have a history with it, the LMDs were not in Somerset. They were mostly in what are known as Northgate subdivisions. So, I'll move to adopt.
All right, thank you so much. I have a motion from Councilwoman Breckis, a second from Vice Mayor Reese Seven. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, sending it right back to you, Councilwoman Breckis, B29.
Yeah, this is B29. This is a joiner, request to join for temp services, and I think you had explained in my briefing about a week ago that we have some temp agencies that we use for work. And it expired, and we're right... You know, something... Okay, okay. And you want to rejoin and bring more temp workers into the workforce. I had asked for a list of how many folks we currently have contracted through this. I didn't see that come forward.
I looked for this. I couldn't find that we have any currently.
Okay.
It's very few and far between when we actually use these temp services.
Okay.
Again, for the record, Vicky Van Buren, Director of Finance. The police department occasionally uses them for transcription. We in finance have used them occasionally for scanning projects, maybe six to eight weeks. These are for temporary, limited-term assignments. We've joined onto this contract previously. Council approved it in 2017, and it was good for five years, so it went through 2021. And so this would just allow us to join back onto the same contract, where you could use any of these three agencies. The benefit is, is if you have an employee who is out for a long period of time due due to medical or other, other reasons and you're holding that position, you can fill in at least a little bit to alleviate some of the workload on some of the other staff. This is not intended to replace a position and it's not intended as a long-term fix if a full-time position or even a permanent part-time position is needed. This is just a temporary, limited-term project or to fill in if you have a long-term employee that is for some reason out so that you can alleviate some of that for your other staff.
Yeah, and I accept that, you know, how it's been used in the past. But I want to express to the rest of the council my concerns about it. Is, one, every position has to go through an analysis of classification of the civil service applicability. And I am concerned that this is a carve-around there. You know, you see someone walking in the halls, "Who are you with your badge and this?" "Oh, I'm consultant. I'm, I'm this person." And particularly because I don't see how, as each department comes up, there's going to be controls on that. Whether or not they are replacing, duplicating a position that needs to be created, that's gone unfilled because we have a recruitment issue. And most importantly, the manager is limited to 47 positions outside of civil service, appointed, appointed employees. And he's probably beyond that right now from what my analysis is. In fact, he's even created positions that we didn't even put in the budget. One was the urban economist. I, you know, got an announcement, "We have an urban economist." Well, we don't have an urban economist. We have an innovation officer. We don't have an innovation officer. We don't have that in the personnel schedule. And so positions are being created that don't have classification. People are being hired when we don't have, and I asked for two weeks, the position description. Now, now there's a maxing up to these non-civil service positions and this consultant contract can be the way to hire through manpower the urban, you know, happy, happy counselor. And I want, will only support this from what I've seen, you know, long history in this organization, unless the council puts some parameters, possibly through a resolution that's a statement of the council's intent on how they want to see this used. Because what I am seeing in the personnel world right now is, and I've been the Civil Service Commission Liaison for a number of years and I have a long history in this organization, is I've seen incredible fluidity that is unaccountable to our budgeting that we close up in, in May. We close up a budget in May and then all of a sudden positions like the ombuds person are never filled, but new positions like an urban economist are created. That have never been, and then going into the appointed level where we haven't even had any work on that. So I am very concerned that these will be used for getting around the 47 cap that the civil service worked very hard. We went down to the legislature to get that number and bringing folks on. So I want to see some parameters if we're going to be bringing these temp folks on. And also I don't want to erode our represented and civil service merit-based system. Those are our values. I know I'm throwing a lot at the body right now, maybe more to answer, ask questions. But we have a merit-based civil service framework here. Then we have bargaining groups and so on. And we don't have a free-for-all, you know, non-merit, create, make up positions outside of budgetary system. And that's what I'm afraid that this gives that latitude for. So I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Any questions from the body? All right, go ahead, Councilwoman Doerr.
Thank you. I, I just want to get on the record. I just want to confirm. I mean, Vicky, when we signed this agreement, you just said what your understanding is for the temp positions. And you just said you, we don't even have any today, as of this today.
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, because I come and go.
Yeah.
It's, it's very, I mean, we only use it when we absolutely have to have some staff and we want to alleviate some workload.
Is it primarily administrative or are there, could we hire temporary engineers or...
In the past, and I haven't seen it recently, they've used it for temp employees for the, oh, what do you call it?
I mean, is parks?
Weed abatement program because they try to hire those seasonal temp employees. And you know how hard, how hard the staffing is right now to get employees, period. And then if you're only hiring for a seasonal temporary person, and I know in the past years they have used this service occasionally to fill some of those slots. But again, in that case, they're just temporary employees anyway. They're not a full-time position and they were never intended as a full-time position.
Well, I just wanted to share from my own personal business that I just reached out to a temp agency myself to fulfill a administrative-type position on a temporary basis until I can complete the hiring. You know, go through that process. So I'm pretty familiar with them, but I just, I mean, I'm glad we're having the conversation. Glad to know how the city's using them. I mean, the guidelines, I mean, what I'm hearing from you and I would like, I don't know if our HR folks are around, but they may know more about how this is used. Did you talk to them perhaps?
We have, we've, I mean, departments have used these on and off, as I said.
That's great.
We've had this contract in, in effect for five years since council approved it previously.
Well, I'm very comfortable with the process. And I know that at the city, I would count on the city to hire. If they had a full-time job that they needed a full-time person, I'm confident they would hire a full-time person, so.
And I would like to mention that departments can't use it if they don't have some type of savings in their budget. So normally they would have either salary savings because they haven't filled a position and they're waiting to fill it, getting through that whole process. Or they're having to use some of their other supply savings and such to pay for it if they want to bring someone in just to do a temporary project like scanning or something.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions? Go ahead, Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, that brings up something and, and the inner workings of the civil service, which I, I don't know how much some, even some of the senior members are aware. Quarterly, the manager's office through HR presents a list of all the temp employees. And they can't work above a certain amount of hours.
That's what I thought.
Okay? So this whole apparatus of these contractors are not going to be reported back over to civil service because they're not employees of the city. They're employees of the temp agency. So all of a sudden you've eroded the good work that the Civil Service Commission has done in terms of monitoring the workforce to know how many temp people are on by this shadow workforce. And I, I, I think, and I acknowledge some of the reasons for it. You know, the transcription, if someone's out on a leave and so on, that's fine. But it is very ripe for a runaround our procedures. And I'm seeing a lot of play with the procedures already from where I sit. So I am concerned and, you know, you start to see these, these badged, you know, manpower or temp workers integrated, sitting at desks, you know, with badges and, and so on. You do start to see an erosion of our workforce and I am concerned about that. I think the right way to do this is to pass a resolution to enter into these and say that quarterly, all of these folks with the hours reported, what they're doing, go to the civil service and the council, just like the temp employees do. That's how I would do this. Anything else that doesn't honor our checks and balances and how we run our personnel is not going to have my support today. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Vice Mayor?
I'm happy to move to approve staff recommendations.
Second? I have a motion. I have a second from Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Okay. Uh, I did want to just bring up one thing and it sounds like there, I think everyone noticed there's a lot of privileged alcohol licenses on this agenda. I was going to pull sort of general, but it's coming back to the next council meeting, so I'm not going to discuss it today. But I do, I know that Lance is going to bring it back and we'll talk about it a little bit in general, what these licenses mean. I've been looking at a lot of them and quite honestly, I mean, I think those are licenses, obviously, privileged. So they need to be attached with these requirements and to make sure that those requirements are being followed to a T. And maybe also putting in some other stringent processes when it comes to these privileged alcohol licenses. So I just wanted to put that on the radar. That will be coming back. And the only reason I mention it is there's many of them on here and I didn't think it was appropriate to pull every single license. Go ahead, Councilwoman Doerr.
Madam Mayor, on the same point, in my briefing, I did ask about one of these and I asked for some history. This is just for our staff. I don't think I ever heard the history. I don't think, you know, I'd asked one of the companies, you know, I wanted to understand the performance before they opened up another outlet, also on Ward 2, nearby the other outlet. And I just wanted to let our staff know, which is JW's taking a note. I never heard back and I realized in this moment that you're bringing this up, that I never did hear back. And I just approved him as a group, but...
Right, you only have 900 things happening. I know because we do like this, this and this and then we're like, "Oh, I forgot about that."
So...
Okay, good.
Okay.
Well, our Assistant City Manager, JW Hodge, will handle that. And then one of the things, because I bet Lance is listening, just to put it on there so that I can have, all of us can have a little bit of clarity. Because I do think it's a little bit different in a restaurant setting versus a liquor store.
Well, and then this is in between. This is a convenience store. And neither a restaurant nor a liquor store, but a convenience store and was the one of my interest. So, there you go.
Okay, you know, Madam Mayor, I, I want to just weigh in right now because we're kind of off agenda, but those who just had their issuance of their cabaret licenses, they're good to go. You know, they, they have cabaret license. We granted them because there's, you know, people here who could be still here, "I thought I had a license." You're talking possibly about changing some rules at some point in time down the road.
Right.
Okay, so those who we just took 15 cabarets, you have a cabaret license, you're good to go. If we do any more rulemaking, we'll go through a public participation process in the future.
And I was just letting JW know because I realized I had asked a question about one and it slipped my mind to ask what the follow-up was. And so I voted on it, but I never did hear the answer. So I needed to say that right now. Not changing rules, but...
All right, thank you so much. Okay, moving right along. Madam Clerk, sending it right back to you just to make sure that the public knows where we are on the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're moving on. We don't have any C or D or E or F items today. So we're moving right along to item G1, which is consideration discussion and possible approval of changes to the city's boards and commissions appointments.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to ask you at this time, Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment?
Madam Mayor, we have no public comment on this item.
Okay.
So for this item today, generally this is our annual appointment process that we go through every December. This is to align the city council with the boards and commissions that we are either a part of on an external basis or internally run boards and commissions that we house here at the city of Reno. And these are just the annual appointments of each of you to those boards and commissions. We had a little bit of a plan set out, but it sounds like that sort of changed a little bit this morning. And so if you would like Councilmember Doerr
Yeah.
to take the floor, then we will go ahead and start there.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
For the good of the order, I knew we had several new council members who have never been on a board or commission and we need to fill something like 30 boards and commissions, maybe there are 35. They all have different terms. They all do different things. So I think in the last few weeks, in informal conversations, I think we've tried to educate our new colleagues about what some of these boards and commissions do. There's a lot that goes with them in terms of when they meet, what their charge is, how they communicate back with the council, all of that. So we obviously can, can achieve all of that education process. Nevertheless, we do need to make some appointments. So in order to, many times we're already sitting here, we're already on boards and commissions and we make a vote, we just say, "We'll stay on all the boards and commissions we're on with a couple changes perhaps." Well, this time we have, you know, at least a 50% change, a roughly 50% change. So what I did was I took a stab at organizing our boards and commissions in a different way than we've seen before. And I, these are very informal, non-formal titled categories. But I just divided them on a major regional board. That's one that meets monthly and makes significant dollar and policy decisions at that board. And they're regional. They are participated in by either other local governments and/or other appointees that those local governments make. There are minor regional boards and this is not disparaging. This is just, they meet less often, usually typically quarterly, but it could be every six months. The decisions that are made there are very informative and important, but they generally don't rise to the same level as some of the other boards. And they meet less frequently. And it doesn't mean they're unimportant whatsoever. I mean, I care very deeply about the ones I serve on and I'm sure everyone else does too. There's a gray line I put. So the ones above the gray line have multiple members on them. The ones below the gray line have only one member on them. The next page that I've provided is internal boards. So we have a number of internal that are only made up of city council representatives and potentially some others like market tax credits. Some of them have multiple members, some have only one, so again, I put a gray line. And then for liaisons, five of us have a nab. And then there are a whole basket of boards and commissions that we have set up. And we have all taken on a role at one time or another of being a liaison to that commission. And what I've done is taken my best stab as a beginning conversation to discuss this. There are two other changes I want to mention. The ones in green again have appointments. They're either, they have a term and they're not up for appointment today, so someone's already sitting in them. And number two is I put a star by ones that we may want to assign an alternate that don't have an alternate today, so I have a little star. And I sent this out and I then worked with the clerk. You know, I took a first stab, worked with the clerk then and found out I'd left out some alternates and so on. So that's where we are today. This is simply a proposal, a starting point for a conversation.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Doerr. Appreciate it. All right, so Madam, oh, sorry, let me just stick on to this agenda over here. Vice Mayor Reese?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just a couple of thoughts for the body. First of all, thank you to Councilmember Doerr for undertaking the work because this is not easy. It's a lot of just technical, trying to make sure you've got everything in place. And so I appreciate the effort that went into putting this together. All of the boards and commissions have work that is meaningful and positive and has opportunities for things that we can all be passionate about. I think for my part, having come onto the board in the middle of the term and been plugged in in certain places in the first two years that I was on the body, I sort of have learned that, you know, you grow where you're planted. And so just to all the colleagues, I, I would just say, every one of the boards and commissions does have value it and you'll be able to make your mark in, in a number of them. The other thing I will say is, I think, and maybe this is just a staff thought, but there are a number of boards and commissions, and I'm mostly talking about internal ones, those in which we are liaisons too, that I think ultimately we should have some more uniform bylaws to them. I, I think there are perhaps even boards that have outgrown their usefulness. And so I think one of the things that should happen is, once we get through all of this, and I am happy to support Councilmember Doerr's sort of idea. I, I don't know that there's anything I would change about it. I do think it's time for us to take as a staff some effort to undertake whether or not all of the boards and commissions that we have the opportunity, and again, mostly those are internal ones, whether they're useful, whether the bylaws of them are up to date. I seem to recall on a number of boards over the last two years, we've started to try to make them more uniform in terms of number of persons on them, when their appointments come up, what is a quorum and what is not a quorum. All those things we've got to sort of standardize because I think it's causing both some institutional chaos, our, our staff are having to staff these. But at the end of the day, I think we could have those discussions outside of today's conversation. But I just think I flag it for our, our city staff and the city manager's office to be thinking about that. But again, I, I sort of go back to what I started with, which is much thanks to Councilmember Doerr for the work to get us to this moment. And I'm happy to support the recommendations that are identified here.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Go ahead, Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, so I had been discussing internally for some time that before we get to this point, but you know, maybe the manager didn't hear it from a collective voice of us, is that we do the noodling on the boards, you know. So we have them kind of set which ones, you know, maybe aren't delivering, maybe which ones are delivering reformulation. So that we had all that discussion prior to today when we make the appointments. And, you know, that's not going to happen, so maybe it has to go the way Mr. Reese explained. I think it's unfortunate, and I'll just, I'll give a couple of examples. I've been on the Special Events Committee. I'm the only one left on the Special Events Committee. That has a big role. Special events are having a hard time right now, a real big hard time, okay? As recent as Thanksgiving. And hearing from constituents. And, you know, but still, staff never convene the Special Events Committee all year long. And where, what? And we had a meeting and it was canceled. So that's a problem. Another one, and I want to, I want to particularly support the success of our new members, is the U.S. City Council. There was an article in the newspaper about, in one of the media's outlets about that recently. And I don't want to set someone up for failure. I have some really, you know, I have some ideas about that. I've been involved with the U.S. City Council since the early 2000s. I know when it's performed well, when it's performed poorly. I was going to suggest, but I had a conversation with Mr. Martinez who I, I think would be interested, but I didn't... don't think we should, you know, I, I don't know how much he knows about it. But I, I think that rather than having the youth city council, because there's so much churn on those high school students, is we allocate two members of youth on each NAB. That's the way, that's what I wanted to propose, and then we wouldn't fill that one. And I have maybe three or four others. I never supported the North Valleys one. I always, I always thought it was a too big an issue to not have the full bodies focus on. I think maybe, and we've had conversations at that level, that the CDBG committee has outlived its, so.
Yeah.
You know, I, I mean, we've got to make some appointments today, but I, I really think that we need to impress collectively as a body to the manager, set the table for us to have this discussion. That's one. Number two, I will not support anyone to go to RTC unless they are a reformer for RTC. It's the most powerful and ill-serving body in this region. And the only reformer person who understands the issues, how to get there from financial to land use, is me. So I won't support anyone over going there. We have two fifths of that body, and I am not going to send anyone over there to be on that two fifths unless they're bringing the reform agenda that I have created a, a long, long menu recipe for, for the last 10 years. And, you know, if anyone, anywhere wants to hear how RTC is so broken and need of reform, you know, just get with me. I acknowledge I'm a little light on these, and I'm very ready to be light on appointments. So if someone feels that they've been assigned by Ms. Doer, maybe a little more of a lift that they want, I would accept maybe one more. But, and I will not be an alternate for the, the, do you have me as an alternate for flood? No, I won't be an alternate for that.
Okay. You already were. That's why I just.
Yeah, I'm dropping off of that. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm glad you mentioned that because we had, Councilwoman Doer and I had that conversation in depth about special events. We have to really redefine like who we are, what we want to be in special, in special events. And I also think we need a dedicated person as special events manager, coordinator, whatever that looks like. We don't have that. And we are a massive special events city. So we've really got to figure out who we are and what we want to be. And also what other roles everyone else plays. And what I mean by this is, we give funding to special events, but so does the county, so does Sparks. And oftentimes, those people will go and ask money for each entity when we should actually be doing this regionally. So everyone knows how much everyone's getting. So instead of double dipping into other areas or sort of this process that I think is very broken, especially for the events people too, trying to figure out, well, who do I go to for this? How do I go here? Whatever. It's very fragmented. So I think it needs to be a regional approach, but we also have to figure out what we're doing. And I don't know how to sort of manage that if we ask the other, you know, jurisdictions if they want to, or the other entities, if they want to somehow form it as one. I know Commissioner Lucy and I had this conversation because we're over at the RRCBA, where people come to us for money as well. So we're all kind of divvying it out, but we all need to be on the same page. So we all know how much everyone is giving. And then it also helps that if there's one special event that's not getting enough money, then we know that they need help. And otherwise, they're, they're sort of all over the place trying to figure out their funding. So I think that's one reason. And then I would agree, CDBG, what I don't like about that, what I never liked about it, is if you're on that committee, those wards tend to get the majority of that money, and I get it. But I think it should be distributed evenly between the council members' wards. So that's a big reason why I don't like the CDBG. Go ahead.
Well, there's, there's two points here. CDBG goes to only qualified areas. And so it's been our practice to have on that body the more, those who represent more of the qualified. So it can't be, you know, twenty percent among five wards. It just cannot happen. And I think that, we, we can go on, but I think staff has done such a great job in the last couple of years. It's not showing up bad in audits any longer that, you know, they're, they're very clear on where they're going. The one that I think does need to go away, and I never supported either, was the SEAP. But, Madam Mayor, we do have a special events position budget. I know when I left budget in May, I had a special events manager in that budget. And why we don't have that person filled, I don't know. Maybe they're, you know, that position is, that money is transferred over to something else. But we have a special events manager. I don't know who it is. It hasn't been filled. Maybe that position's converted over. Those are the examples of when positions change, they need to come back to us. Because we, we do what we do in May.
And one of the things I do want to bring up, because I don't think this is a staffing or anyone else's fault, we're kind of picking back up from the pandemic. So really, there were a lot of reasons why we weren't meeting because we were putting other priorities in place. So I want everyone to be aware of that. That's some of the reason why some of these just kind of were left unnoticed at that time.
Right. And events weren't happening too. I mean, they closed a lot of events, Art Town, for example, and others. I mean.
That's another big reason. Okay. Madam Clerk, how, how would you like to do this? Go ahead.
Yeah. Really simple. First of all, just one final thing on special events. There, there's only three people technically, but it's an internal board, and I think we could have four. But, I mean, as, as Councilmember Reese said, and several of you said, this is a today's thing. This is very flexible. And what I want to say is that, especially for our new council members, as you figure out what the schedules are for these groups, if you can even work that into your schedule, if you find out it's too heavy of a load, if you find out that you're not as interested in that thing, you know, we, we all have gotten appointed to commissions that we didn't know what they did, and we learned on the job, and then we found out.
I'm off.
Maybe it's not my thing. So what I tried to do in this was to kind of lean into your expertise that I knew you had, if I knew, an area maybe that you might be interested in, which I was trying to guess. And then third, where do we need help? And then just say, everybody's got to shoulder the load. So I wanted to say this is not a permanent assignment. We, we do it annually, but we also throughout the year, people have made changes every year. My job has changed. I can't do this anymore. I can't meet at this time. This just isn't going to work. And we bring it back to the council, and we appoint someone else. So I just, for the new members, I just wanted you to know that this isn't like a lifetime assignment. And, and finally, many of us have rotated, I'll tell you what, I think of finance advisory board in the last eight years, it was Councilwoman Breckus, it was myself, I think Naomi Jordan was on there at one point, now it's Devin Reese. In other words, we've taken several years shots at these things, and then given it to someone else to get experience. I did arts and culture for seven years, then we transferred it, and we transferred it again. So these are, I've been on BFA, four of us have been on BFA at different times in just the last eight years. So I'm just giving you some examples of how fluid some of this is, and that you have opportunity, consider it an experiment, or an opportunity to see a different side of the world you may not have even known you're interested in. So I've only heard so far, and I want to ask any of our new colleagues, we've heard from Councilmember Breckus, how do our, I mean, this is a stab in the dark. So how do our new colleagues feel about these assignments as they get started? Or are you interested in a change?
So, but hold on before we jump onto that. I think you're just saying that nothing is set in stone right now. So don't feel completely.
Right.
Tied to these boards. Because as time goes, sometimes you realize your schedule doesn't work, or that isn't your bailiwick.
Right.
I'm going to send it to Vice Mayor Reese, and then Councilwoman Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that Councilmember Breckus, and you have made a good point about a number of the boards needing some time to think about their usefulness. And so we'll leave that for another day. But otherwise, I think, again, Councilmember Doer's done a good job of taking a stab at putting these together. And so I'll be supportive of how it's identified here. Sounds like there's one slight correction, and then maybe if anyone has anything else to add, but I do not.
All right. Councilwoman Taylor, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilwoman Doer. I have, is in the queue to raise my hand and let you know I am very appreciative of your work on this. Thank you so much. Not easy, herding the cats, as I say.
It was three-dimensional chess, right?
Exactly. I'm very loud here. And then I just also, I know, Councilman Martinez, your work with the youth has been. Thanks for your work with all of our youth population and everything that you've done to support that. And I am in support of everything on this list. So thank you very much, Councilwoman Doer.
Madam Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I know. We're just trying to still figure out who's coming up.
I want to share with folks that Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency meets six times a year. And the Civil Service Commission meets monthly, by charter must meet monthly. And they used to meet the last Thursday of the month. And that didn't give them a lot of time, if they had a problem, to have their meeting on another day, because you're usually at the end of the month. So they just moved their meeting to, I think it's the second Thursday of the month in the afternoon. That conflicts with TMRPA six times a year, and it is really going to be hard for someone to do those two. Likewise, Historic Resources Commission, which is not going to be as difficult, but it is really problematic to be on TMRPA and be on Historic Resources Commission. I did both. It's not easy. So, and a lot of ti, and they want to see you, you know. And that's another thing to new folks, is find out real soon if it's not working for you. Because these citizens in our internal ones are giving up their time, and they want to see a council member. And particularly on the Historic Resource Commission, that's in ordinance and is advisory to the council, they want that dialogue. So if you're on TMRPA and you're the Historic Resources Commission, I'm not even sure who it is.
I put myself, and if I could respond on that.
You're going to have issues. Because I've had issues. And, and civil service, I think, is really flawed to be on both of those. That's going to be very hard for you also, whoever's doing that.
So let me ask you, I'll ask first one, then the other. On Historic Resources, just with the hope that I might get appointed, I didn't know, I called the chair, and I told them, I've observed you, Councilwoman Breckus, having to dash out of TMRPA. And I said, I don't, I don't want to live that dream. Can we move this meeting to a different day or a different time? And they said they were amenable and will work with me. So I totally agree with you. I have watched you try to do both things.
They weren't amenable before, and they moved it one hour. So, you know, it's longstanding, but okay. You're warned.
Push it back another half hour or move to a different day. I've already given them some warning, in case I was appointed, because I knew that would be a problem. So. And then Mr. Martinez has his hand up, I think, Mayor.
I'm sorry. It's not coming up on my screen. Can he come up on screen if he's on Zoom?
Hello? Can y'all hear me?
Okay. Go ahead, Councilman Martinez.
Hi. Sorry I couldn't be with you all today. I hope I felt a little bit better to join you all. I just want to chime in on the discussion and thank Councilmember Doer for all of the time and energy that she put towards making this spreadsheet and helping us have a starting point to have the conversation. I do think that the work that I have done in my professional life has given me a lot of experience working with youth. So I would hope to maintain that in this new role with city council. So I would hope to stay on youth city council. And the other ones that I have on here as well, I think I agree with as well. So I just wanted to mention that and state that for the record. And I appreciate the time to speak today. Thank you.
And I didn't finish the second part of what I said on historic. The second one is, you've identified another issue, Ms. Breckus, about TMRPA and civil service. If they're on the same day and time, six times a year, that's a problem. I, if that was just a change. Or, I mean, is that something you're willing to keep on doing? I mean.
Well, I think, I'm not on it.
I thought you just said.
Are they at the same time, though? I don't think they're at the same time.
Yeah, they are.
They're an hour and a half apart.
They're what?
Yeah, I was going to say the Civil Service Commission currently meets on the second Thursday of the month at 3:30. And Truckee Meadows Regional is the second Thursday of even months at 2:00 p.m. So there is an hour and a half.
But it goes usually 2:00 to 4:30.
Yeah, you're not going to be done in time.
And then you have to drive. So it's just, that's why Councilwoman Breckus had to leave to, to get to a 3:30 meeting at Historic Resources, even at 4:00. They moved it to 4:00, you still had to leave early. So all I'm just saying is, if we have a known conflict, is that something you're willing to keep doing? Or should we move it over to our new colleagues?
No. I think, Ms., Ms. Taylor, are you, I, I, I think Ms. Taylor's the one who's going to have the conflict. And I would suggest you to choose one or the other, and someone else should take one of those.
Oh, I got you. Like, maybe. Not you. Because you're, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right. Same issue with you. So a different idea would be to have potentially Ms. Ebert or Martinez to take it over. If, you know, it is hard to do both just from experience.
And the civil service does want you there.
Yeah. So, same time.
All right. The other, well, the other thing too, is I always thought that some of these could have citizen appointments. There are some that I do feel like it would be nice to be able to, I mean, these are a lot, lot of these. So I don't know under the charter or what that looks like, but I think you could identify some of these and how you would have to change that. But that's a much broader conversation.
Let me ask, I'll just broker a, Ms. Ebert here just mentioned that she'd be willing to trade arts and culture and do civil service for you. I don't know.
I, I don't need to change arts and cultures. If you'd like civil service, that's perfectly fine with me.
You're willing to take it?
Okay. So Councilwoman Doer, get us back on track.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, we haven't heard. Yes. What suggestions?
So would I keep arts and culture as well?
I think she was declining. Is that what? I think Ms. Taylor was declining.
Okay. If you want to unload one, and I am light, I will take one. I could take Tom Worf, but if you, which is every, once a quarter, it's not a big deal. You drive out to the plant. And I'm the alternate anyway. But if you are feeling overwhelmed, like, because you did get a lot, did you get Parks and Rec also, or Planning Commission?
No. No, it's on your chart.
I do the planning commission.
So the difference is, we have a Reno Planning Commission.
Yeah.
And according to Ms. Taylor, our planning commission liaison did not often show. Is that what you told me?
I think she was in attendance at some time.
On maybe on Zoom or something? Okay.
Sometimes she was in attendance.
Well, I'll just say, because I was the planning commission liaison before the last person. And, you know, we all fall into our liaison roles as we feel, you know. And I do a lot of touch and go with the members to see what they want. But I made quarterly visits to the planning commission and gave them a report. So I'm willing to take on the planning commission.
Okay.
And Tom Worf or Arts and Culture, whichever one you're willing to give, give up, Ms. Ebert, because you got a lot of boards. If you want to give one up, I'll take one.
Yeah. Do you have a preference between Arts and Culture or Reno Planning Commission?
I'll tell you, Arts and Culture's going to be more work. Planning Commission, you know, I would recommend quarterly, just coming in and giving a report. So whichever you want, want to give me, I will take. Arts and Culture, I think, meets at McKinley. And I'm always very sensitive to the Ward Four representative, because they're the ones who have to drive physically the most. So if you want me to take Arts and Culture, I'll take it from you. I will.
Thank you.
Okay. So Madam Mayor, if you're okay, I'm just going to go down the list and, and say who the recommended person is, and then we can just take a vote on each board. Because I think, for clarity, that's the easiest way since we've made some transitions.
I've tracked them all.
And I don't have, I have two. So that's why I'm just going to read off what I have tracked. And then it seems like we should be all on the same page with one clear record.
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to start with access advisory committee. And it looks like we have Councilmember Taylor appointed to that board.
All right. I have a motion for Councilwoman Taylor. Do I have a, I'm giving a motion.
I think she was going to read them all.
Nope. I'm just going to do it.
We're going to go one by one.
I'm just going to do it one by one so that I've got a clear record. So we've got Councilmember Taylor.
I'm going to make a motion for Councilwoman Taylor on access advisory. I have a second by Vice Mayor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay. Back at you.
So for animal advisory board, I have Councilmember Doer.
Motion.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Hey, building advisory, I have one liaison position, and it is assigned to Councilmember Taylor.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, capital surcharge advisory committee, we have three members. Right now, I have that listed on this as, okay, Mayor Shivi, Councilmember Reese, and Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
So Shivi, Reese, Martinez.
Move, Breckus. So I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Civil Service Commission, we have transitioned that to Councilmember Ebert.
Move.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, community development block grant subcommittee, we have three members and one alternate. So right now, I have Mayor Shivi. So right now I have Mayor Sheevy, Councilmember Reese, Councilmember Ebert, and Councilmember Martinez listed as the alternate.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Community Homelessness Advisory Board, SEHAB, right now I currently have. Sorry.
Mr. Reese.
Devin, yeah, so Councilmember Reese. Oh, there should be more than one, though.
Councilmember Taylor.
Taylor.
Sorry, having them on two boards over here. Okay, so Councilmember Reese and Taylor as the members and then Councilmember Martinez as the alternate.
All right, moved. So I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Go ahead.
Okay, the Downtown Bid. I have Councilmember Taylor listed as the member. And I have Councilmember Martinez as the alternate.
I'll support that, but I want to make one point is if Miss Taylor, have you done any analysis to see, are you a property owner who pays into the bid?
I am.
Are you eligible to serve then?
We'll, we'll take a look at it and make sure, we'll get back to you.
All right, so we will hold off on that appointment and we'll come back to it. We could even bring it to the next meeting if we can't, if you don't have an answer today.
Right.
Yeah, move to continue. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries. All right, back at you, Madam Clerk.
Sorry, just updating my notes. Okay, so we're on Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada, so EDON. And our current recommended appointment for EDON is Councilmember Reese. And for an alternate, we have Councilmember Taylor.
All right, so can I get a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm opposed. I don't support us having a position on that. We, they contract with us, so I don't support us having a position on that.
I think we should put it on the list to discuss.
Okay, let's do that. But for now, we'll keep those in place. All right, so all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Breckus opposed.
Okay.
Financial Advisory Board, Councilmember Reese.
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Hey, Historical Resources, Councilmember Doer.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Human Rights Commission, I have Councilmember Martinez.
Move.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
National League of Cities, I have one appointment and one alternate. So I have Councilmember Ebert as the appointment and Councilmember Doer as the alternate.
All right, thank you so much. Make it a motion. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Nevada League of Cities, I have one appointment and one alternate. However, I don't see an alternate on here, Councilmember Doer.
When you, we, you and I talked, you did not mention an alternate, so I didn't.
Okay, so I have, does, is anybody interested in the alternate position for Nevada League of Cities?
I will do it.
Okay, so we currently have Councilmember Ebert as the appointment and Councilmember Breckus as the alternate.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
North Valleys Water Management Subcommittee, I have Councilmember Doer, Councilmember Ebert, and Councilmember Taylor.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
I'm opposed because I never supported the formation in the first place.
Okay, uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Uh, motion carries. All right.
Okay, Oversight Panel for Schools, I currently have Councilmember Reese and Councilmember Martinez.
All right.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second, Breckus.
Second from Councilwoman Breckus. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Recreation and Parks, I have Councilmember Martinez.
So moved.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Taylor, a second from Councilwoman Doer. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board, I have Mayor Sheevy.
So moved.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Doer, a second from Vice Mayor Reese. All those in favor say aye.
I'm not supporting because I don't even think we have any members on that committee.
All right.
Another one we have to look at, truly.
Yep.
Okay, Regional Transportation Commission.
I just want to make a comment, Ms. Breckus, we really couldn't make these appointments. We had our new colleagues and we had the election. So I, we're doing it immediately after, so I don't know that there was a lot of time to talk about it before today.
I've been talking about it since the spring.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, so Regional Transportation Commission, RTC, we have, as, as members, we have Mayor Sheevy and Vice Mayor Reese. As alternates, we have Councilmember Doer. Yep, Councilmember Doer.
All right, I have a motion from Councilwoman Doer, I have a second from Vice Mayor Reese. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries. All right, back at you, Madam Clerk.
Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
Was that only one nay? Two nays? Who is the second nay? Councilmember Ebert? Thank you. Reno Arts and Culture Commission, I have Councilmember Ebert. I know that was one that we were talking about maybe changing. Is it still Councilmember Ebert?
No, Breckus, move.
Councilmember Breckus.
I have a motion, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Councilwoman Breckus, for doing that. I think they will be very happy that you're there. Okay.
Okay, Reno City Planning Commission, I have Councilmember Ebert.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, Reno Housing Authority, I have Mayor Sheevy.
Well, you said that we're not voting on that today.
No.
Well, you told me that she was in a term and it wasn't up till 2024 or 2025.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. That is March of 25. My mistake. Thank you. Reno Sparks Convention and Visitor Authority, we have Mayor Sheevy.
I have a motion. I have a second.
So there are not currently alternates. That's up for discussion at some point in the future. But those are identified on this sheet as a, with the asterisks to indicate that there is discussion for it. But I need to contact the board.
Can we appoint them and then delete them if we have to?
We can come back and appoint them if they're available. I don't want to, I don't want to overappoint if it's, if we don't have the parameters to do that.
And Madam Clerk, just to be clear, that would be on the bylaws of the RSCBA.
The bylaws are the NRS and I don't see any indication that we have alternates available to us. So I'm just double checking before we make appointments that aren't available.
Okay, and then I guess I'm, I, would it just go towards the elected officials? Like, let's say Councilwoman Bybee wanted to put someone on there if we were to go back, could you do that first?
Now, remember we changed the composition of the RSCBA around 2015 and 2016? Do you remember that? Because it was you and Mr. Delgado, and then we lost an elected position, which I do not support. I voted for it. In retrospect, I am very uncomfortable that much tax money being allocated by a non-elected accountable board. So if you want to go over there and have those conversations, go for it. But I don't believe that anyone else can proxy for you.
Yeah, okay, I agree.
Okay, so we currently have a motion from Councilmember Taylor.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, Reno Tahoe Airport Authority, Sheevy.
All right. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Reno Tahoe Airport Noise Panel Authority, I have Councilmember Martinez.
I'll move, Breckus.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Breckus, a second from Vice Mayor Reese. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, Councilmember Ebert.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Special Events Sponsorship Committee, I have Councilmember Taylor.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Another one for the list, just in case you're keeping track, Mickey.
We have three on that one, though.
No, not on this, not on the sponsorship committee. You're talking about the subcommittee. They're two separate. Special Events Subcommittee.
That's what I'm saying. I thought the Special Events Committee appoints the member to be on the sponsorship committee.
Oh, maybe.
That's not the way that I had seen it in the documentation, but we will go back and double check it. Special Events Subcommittee has three members. The three that are on here with question marks are Councilmember Ebert, Councilmember Martinez, and Councilmember Taylor.
So the question was for you, Mickey.
We have three members currently in our documentation.
My question is, is that something that we can either amend? Like, we set up the bylaws for that, is that correct?
It would need to come back. They would need to be amended, but yes, you could do that at a later date. So today we have three available vacancies.
So, and four possible, is there anyone who'd like to drop off?
Who are the ones who are?
So we have Mayor Sheevy, Councilmember Ebert, Councilmember Martinez, and Councilmember Taylor. So we need three and we have four.
That's why I had question marks because I just.
Okay, I'll drop off.
Yeah.
Okay, so again, we're moving forward with Ebert, Martinez, and Taylor.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Truckee Meadows Water Authority, three of those positions are appointed as they are co-terminists. So we have one vacant member and one vacant alternate on the list right now for Tom Wa. I'm showing that we are looking to appoint.
At the top. Doer, Reese.
Well, those are already.
No, what you told me.
Okay, so Councilmember Doer is looking for a reappointment. And then as alternates, we have Councilmember Ebert and Councilmember Taylor.
I'll move to reappoint Miss Doer.
What, if I may, just to clarify, Mickey, what I understood that you said was that Ms. Breckus's term was still ongoing and that two positions were up. We have three.
So yes, yes, you're right. So Breckus is still, I'm sorry, you said it right. So we have two vacancies on the member list and two, well. So Councilmember Reese is currently appointed as an alternate. So if we're transitioning Councilmember Reese to a regular, so Councilmember Reese, Councilmember Doer's regulars, and then the two vacancies then would be Councilmember Ebert and Councilmember Taylor.
Right, you got it.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Joint Coordinating Committee.
I'll be the, I'll take that membership role if, yeah. I have a motion, Miss Ebert, I'll, I'll take that from you.
Which one was that?
The Water Authority, the reclamation, it's the sewer plant down in.
It's on the first page.
They only meet quarterly, but you've got a lot. I mean, you just got on the Special Events Committee.
Well, I put the total number on the bottom, so I tried to keep it even for everyone.
Yeah.
So we also need an alternate, so perhaps you guys.
So we currently have it listed as Councilmember Ebert as the appointment and Councilmember Breckus as the alternate.
That's how we had it.
Okay, I would switch it particularly because Ward Four doesn't really even sewer down there.
Okay, all right, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so just for the record, we're making Councilmember Breckus for Tom Wharf the member. And we are making Councilmember Ebert the alternate.
Right.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning and Governing Board. The very top one?
I think you did that.
No, Truckee Meadows Regional, yeah. Okay, so this one is a three-year term. We have Councilmember Breck, Breckus, Councilmember Doer, and Councilmember Reese. They are expiring June 30th of 2023. So we only have one member term available and it looks like the recommendation is Councilmember Taylor.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. It's going to be really important on some of these boards that if you're not there, you get your alternate there. And if you're an alternate, you know, keep your eye on it, particularly, I think, as the legislative session sets up. So please, whoever's on TMRPA's alternate, Tom Wa's alternate, RTC alternate, you know, have your head in the game.
So what we've done in the past is we've appointed everyone as an alternate that is not a member. So that we have plenty to choose from.
Have your liaison populate those meetings just in case you get the call the night before.
Okay, so I have a motion from Councilmember Breckus to appoint Councilmember Taylor as a member to the TMRPA.
A second.
Okay, and then for confirmation, I come off in June, correct?
All three of us do.
Oh, good, okay.
So we would have to bring it back in June.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Truckee River Flood Management, we currently have Councilmember Doer and Councilmember Reese and Councilmember Breckus as an alternate. She's now indicated that she's not interested in being the alternate for that board. So I am looking for one, I am looking for two alternates. So we are looking for Councilmember Martinez as an alternate and I'm looking for one additional alternate.
I'll be an alternate.
Taylor, Martinez, and Doer and Reese.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Urban Forestry, Councilmember Doer.
Second. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Washoe County Debt Management.
Sounds like my dogs.
That would be you, Kathleen.
Sorry, Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, Washoe County Health is Councilmember Reese.
And since we made that appointment just last, was it fulfilling a term?
We made it to expire at the end of this year so that we could do a full appointment if the opportunity presented itself.
Yeah, Mr. Reese has RTC, he has Tom Wa. And I, I want to spread it around and I've always wanted that board, so I'm not going to support him for that. I have particular concern about the air quality situation in our county right now.
All right.
So I'll just point out, Ms. Breckus, if I may, that you also have four. And so if it went to you, let's just say, or some, unless it went to someone else, you would now have five.
They're not all created equal, as you mentioned in your table. And I think someone gets RTC or they get Board of Health, is how I believe it.
Okay.
All right, can I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Reese to Health.
All right, thank you. I have a motion from Councilwoman Doer. I have a second from Councilman Martinez. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Okay, Washoe County Stadium Authority, we have Mayor Sheevy, Councilmember Martinez, and Councilmember Taylor. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Western Nevada Development District, we have Councilmember Doer.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Reese, a second from Councilwoman Taylor. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Western Regional Water Commission, we have Councilmember Doer. Oh, I'm sorry, that was already an appointment floating over.
Wait, wait a second.
You are the Tom Wa appointment.
I know I'm the Tom Wa appointment. Okay.
And I'm the Reno appointment and our terms are still going.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and our last one today, we did so good, everyone, is the Youth City Council, Councilmember Martinez.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries. I also do think Councilwoman Breckus made a good point. I don't know how we, we should bring back some of these items for discussion, Madam Clerk. So we can kind of get them cleaned up because some may or may not be relevant. So thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. That is an ongoing discussion with the City Manager's Office and my team just to make sure that we're reviewing and making sure that we're making the appropriate changes. So we will have those conversations with you in the coming future.
Okay, thank you so much. Good job, Madam Clerk.
I think we, we, let's just check, Mickey, before we leave this. So Access Advisory Board, did you, you called that first, I think.
I did call that first.
Right, so we did that and, and BFAK we called. And then the only one I wanted to, and did we do Animal Advisory Board?
We did.
Okay, I just didn't have a check on it. I was trying to check them off as we went. The Market Tax Credit, just so folks know, I listed it on here, it's an internal board. But just so we recognized it, it only meets again annually or so. And we may, it may be another one that we sunset or whatever.
Just for everyone's knowledge, the, that one is not an actual internal board or an appointed board. So that, that's just a meeting that two different council members go to. So it's not one you appoint to or one that we, we hold as a.
We have to appoint because we got appointed in a formal process.
I don't know that, that, we'll have to go back and look, but.
Well, we did, and we appointed the staff at the same time.
Okay.
So we appointed all five of us.
But that changes that board, so we'll look at that.
Okay.
All right, so we're now closing out Item G1 and moving on to Item G2, which is Councilmember Martinez's appointment to the Ward Three Neighborhood Advisory Board.
Okay.
And I do have a public comment to her here in the audience who would like to make a public comment. It is Marie Rodriguez.
Okay, thank you so much. I was just going to send it back to you to public comment before we hand it over to Councilman Martinez. Come on board. Hello, nice to see you.
Hi, hello. Is this still morning? For the record, um, I am Marie Rodriguez, um, and I'd like to say hello to Madam Mayor and the council members, and thank you for the opportunity to present why I'm interested in being part of the Neighborhood Advisory Board for Ward Three. Being part of the board involves improved communication between my neighbors and the city staff and the city council, to provide my neighbors with an early opportunity to be involved in important community issues, and to create a place for my neighbors to review and have a say on development products, projects. I currently work as a Community Services Officer with the Reno Police Department. To some degree, I've been involved in the above. I meet with Reno citizens on a daily basis and often provide them with information or direction about the city, who to contact or where to go with their questions or concerns. I know Reno's geography and neighborhoods well. I routinely go to every part of our city, from Boomtown and Verde to our border with Sparks, from Stead and Red Rock to Gregor Gray Road and Galena. I'm currently assigned to patrol with, to a patrol team that covers most of Ward Three. As a senior, a Latina, I've been married forty years to a Texan, and I come from a multiracial, multicultural family. I have very good interpersonal skills and the ability to rate, relate to most people, and I use these skills almost daily in my current job. My family and I have lived in Reno for twenty-two years, and my husband and I own our own home in Ward Three, where we have lived for eleven years. Prior to working for the city, I wasn't over-the-road truck driver, and I've actually driven over a million miles and have driven a truck in all lower forty-eight states, so I not only know my city, I know my country. What I have learned from these experiences, as well as my career in the airlines, is the importance of good communication, teamwork, planning, decision-making, accepting setbacks, taking responsibility, and seeing opportunities, and never being afraid to try something new. In my work, I've found that though I am generally taking crime reports from the community, Reno residents love living here, and I love that my current job allows me to serve my fellow citizens and that I have a purpose and am making a difference. I love Reno. We all do, and we do want our biggest little city to be the best little city it can be, don't we? So today, I'm asking for the opportunity to use my skillset, unique perspective, and my experience to be even more involved in Ward Three.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. I appreciate, uh, I think when, during the appointment process, we talked about staying engaged, and I really appreciate your willingness to do that. Um, it's very gracious of you. You've been here all morning. Sometimes it's hard to sit through the making of sausage, so thank you for that. Ms. Huntsman, um, Mr. Martinez, you have the floor. Uh, these are your appointments to your NAB.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I do want to echo, um, what Councilmember Reese is saying. I appreciate, uh, Ms. Mrs. Rodriguez staying, um, the entire time in the meeting and, um, showing your commitment to our ward. Um, I do think that you will bring a great perspective, um, to the NAB, and I hope that we can work together, um, to continue the great work that has been done, um, in a, in the ward. Um, uh, I did have the opportunity to meet with a few of the other applicants, um, during my time when I was considering who to appoint to the NAB, excuse me. Um, and there were a lot of really great, uh, applicants, I reviewed their resumes, um, and what they had, um, lived through, and their own experiences, um, so I appreciate, um, them putting themselves out there, um, and being willing to serve the ward in that capacity. Um, I know it takes a lot of dedication, um, and their time to be able to, um, review what is needed to be prepared for those meetings and make the decisions that need to happen, um, there. So I, uh, again, I commend, uh, Mrs. Rodriguez for staying there and for showing up and giving public comment, um, and staying engaged, um, throughout this, this time. If I may, I'd like to make a motion, um, to appoint Gabriel Maya and Marie Rodriguez to the Ward Three Neighborhood Advisory Board, um, and have Tracy Kimmons, um, as an alternate for the Ward Three NAB.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Martinez.
And I'll, I'll support, but I do want to flag, because I had someone on my Neighborhood Advisory Board who entered the Fire Academy and now is a firefighter, and he was told he had to leave the NAB as an employee. So I don't, y- you know, I, I'm not trying to undermine your abilities to serve on the NAB, but I also want equity of, you know, how people, you know, how it's written out. I, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, maybe the rules have changed, but, um, I thought city employees couldn't be on the NAB.
Well, that's a very good question.
And why not?
Well, we're just gonna have to ask.
It was in our bylaws.
Hmm, well, I think it would be good for them to do so, because they have extra invested interest. That's just my thought, but, okay, well, uh, Madam Clerk, will you find out for us?
I do think that it's a conflict. Um, I don't know if Carl wants to speak to it as the, the attorney, but I do believe that, um, they're in the capacity of being an employee, even though you are a resident, I do think that there is a conflict between the two. Um, but I will go ahead and review that if we want to continue, Councilmember, or if we want to continue Marie's appointment at this time, um, we can continue with Gabriel Maya and Tracy Kimmons as an alternate, and then I will get back in touch with Councilmember Martinez about that appointment.
Okay, so let's do that now. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously, and then our city attorney, the infamous Carl Hall, will find out for us, correct?
Yes, we'll look into that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to Item H1, which is the, um, Mayor and Council Comments.
All right, any council comments?
I have a council comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everyone. This was, uh, an interesting, like I said, kind of almost three-dimensional chess exercise. It was, um, because it was like a game, it was, it was not horrible. Um, it was fun. I mean, I did my best, and, um, it looks like it mostly came to fruition, so thanks, everyone.
All right, and I want to thank you for doing such a good job.
Thanks.
You know, it takes a lot of work, but also trying to figure out everyone's interests, so I think, um, you did a good job.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. And I want to thank you, because we asked everyone that applied, who was going to stay engaged. I think that speaks a lot about who you are and how much you care. Um, it really means a lot to us, and so, um, I'm going to keep you on my radar for, for other things that are, that come up, because we have other appointments. That would be another good thing to know. Could we put someone, like, let's say, um, on the, like, the airport, because I know that that's not council, things like that? Yeah. If you're a city employee.
Yeah, if it is correct, what I recall with that firefighter, um, and I have in the past encouraged folks to do apply for other, like, county boards and commissions, um, but I think that research should be done again.
Yeah, and it sounds like we will. Okay, any other council comments?
Just one briefly, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just want to, um, flag for all of us, we have, uh, both, uh, Christmas tree lighting tonight, and then, uh, about ten days from now, we have the first night of Hanukkah, so there'll be the menorah lighting, and those are both really, uh, beautiful events, um, and so I'm hoping that we'll have great turnout.
I think we will, because the weather is, seems to, right, cooperate. All right, anything else, Madam Clerk?
Nope, we are just looking for a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'm going to send it to our.
We did receive one public comment. It was a check-in, they didn't leave any statements. I don't have anybody who has checked in with me at this time, so I don't have any closing public comment either.
Okay, I'm going to send it to our newest member to congratulate and welcome her to the team. Uh, give us our final motion.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. I've never seen anyone oppose it, so, all right, thanks, everyone.